You have one of these little devices that we will be using for some of our votes, just some of the votes, this, this, today, and also next Monday. It's a pretty simple thing to use. When we call for a vote, and I will call that we're going to have an electronic vote, and then I will announce when that, the time to vote starts. We will take about 20 seconds, 15 to 20 seconds. I'll, I'll tell you what the time is, how long you got to vote. You grab these, and you simply press the button for the yes or the no that you prefer for that particular issue that's at hand. This all is collected by that little tiny antenna up here, and comes into the computers, and nobody will see the results of who voted how, but we will have totals that come out of it. And there will also, after the end of the voting, 15 to 20 seconds, then those totals will come up, and it will tell us whether the motion passed or not, and it will give us the exact numbers. This is really great because it allows us, when we have a division of opinion, to get an accurate vote quickly and easily, and we don't have to have the extremely long times of, of either counting hands or even more so, doing a paper ballot. Gives us just as accurate a count and much, much faster. The green sheet that you have in here gives a little bit more explanation about it. And you can, you can read that as you-
Alright, so I'm gonna switch.
As you proceed with it. And on the back of the little green sheet is a rule for this meeting. This rule allows us, if we-
So you'll be the live camera?
To use the electronic voting in place of-
When someone goes to the microphone to talk, you get that shot.
And paper ballots.
That other one's gonna just be stuck on Barry.
If we approve this, we will be able to do that, and-
Although, I don't know if you're gonna be able to get a shot of-
We'll see how you like it today, and then we'll know where we are in the future.
You still just have to shoot through.
If everybody is-
Just get your best shot you can.
We're gonna go to that microphone right there.
Really pleased, we can make a permanent rule in the non-mile laws allowing electronic voting and appropriate issues.
Um, it might be a little rej-.
So at this time, we'll take our first electronic vote. And that electronic vote is gonna be on adopting this rule. Can I have a motion to adopt this rule? Do I have a second? Motion made and seconded to drop the rule on the paper. For this meeting, voting by electronic means will replace counted standing votes or votes by show of hands. Electronic votes will also be used in place of secret paper ballot votes. The moderator shall have discretion to use electronic voting when he deems it desirable to have a complete, accurate vote count. That will allow us to use it when we do two-thirds votes and those things, so we'll, instead of doing seat-of-the-pants things, we'll be able to actually have clear, clear numbers to put in the record of the meeting. So, we have the motion made and seconded to allow, to approve this rule. I'm going to start the voting, and we'll have 20 seconds for you to push your button. You will, it will show in the little window with an okay to indicate that your vote has been tallied. If you decide that you've made a mistake and you wish you'd voted the other way, while the 20 seconds is still going, you can switch to another one, and you'll get another okay. So I will open the voting now, and we start 20 seconds.
Good. Awful.
Yeah, that's what we're sending out over the livestream.
It's on these two screens that'll come up.
You gotta talk into the microphone.
So there's no countdown, Bob Barry, I can close it whenever you want. Just tell me when to close it, and I'll close it.
So we have 62 yes, one no, a total of 63 votes cast. The motion passes. I'm glad somebody voted no, it proves that no works. I will ask the town clerk to read the call for the meeting, and the constable to return.
Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Worcester, S.S., to the Constable of the Town of Berlin, County of Worcester. Greetings, in the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of said town qualified to vote in elections and in town affairs to meet at the Berlin Memorial School-
You can't hear him, Barry.
Thirty-four South Street, in said Berlin, on Saturday, the 15th day of May 2021, next, at 1:00 in the afternoon, then and there, to act on the following articles are in relation thereto. And you are directed to serve this warrant by posting up attested copies thereof as per vote of the town in said town, seven days at least before the time of holding said meeting. Hereof, fail not, and make due return of this warrant with your doings thereon. To the Town Clerk, at the time and place of meeting as aforesaid. Given under our hand this 5th day of April in the year of our law 2021. Berlin Select Board, Christine Keef, Chair, Margaret Stone, Vice Chair, Scott Hawkins, Clerk. A true copy attest, Kevin Fawn, Constable. Worcester, S.S. Pursuant to the within warrant, I have notified and warned the inhabitants of the Town of Berlin by posting up attest copies thereof at the Town Hall, the Town Offices, and the Post Office, at least seven days before the time of holding said meeting as within directed. Kevin Fawn, Constable, date, April 20, 2021.
Thank you, and I will proceed to the articles. The first section of the warrant, Articles 1 through 7, are articles that have to do with fiscal year 2021. That's the one we're in now. And we separate those because most of the meeting has to do with the next fiscal year that starts in July 1st. So the first few articles have to do with this or other things in the past. Article 1, we have a sunset clause extension. I will not write, read the article, I'll let the maker of the motion read the full motion. Christine Keef of the Selectmen, Select Board.
Can you hear me? No, no. You gotta turn it on, there's a switch.
There you go.
Alright, you hear me now? Alright. "I move that the town amend the vote originally taken under Article 20 of the 2019 Annual Town Meeting, and extended under Article 6 of the 2020 Annual Town Meeting, and amend the vote taken under Article 18, Item 5 of the 2020 Annual Town Meeting, by extending until June 30th, 2022, the date by which money must be expended for the purposes of purchasing and equipping a new fire and EMS department, pumper, tanker, truck, repairing and repaving the Town Office and Public Safety Park and Lot." You'll man this camera? And-
Motion is made and seconded. It is as you see it on the motion sheet that you will give it in your packet. So I'll start reading again. Is there anything to be said on this motion?
No, just to set it right.
Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation on that?
Alright, so you're a short leash here with the HDMI, but if any of these people talk, you get them, okay?
Finance Committee approves this action. Is there anyone else that wants to speak to it? Same work to be done, just giving us a little more time to finish it. In that case, I want you to vote. We'll vote by voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Article 2, Special Legislation Authorizing the Fire Chief to Serve Beyond Age 65. Meg Stone of the Select Board.
Before I read the motion, I just want to send a quick shout-out to Highway Police, Cable, and Fire for making today and Monday possible, so thank you. Alright, on to the motion. "I move that the town authorize the Select Board to petition the General Court for special legislation allowing Paul Kenneth Clark, the Berlin Fire and EMS Chief, notwithstanding the provisions of any general or special law to the contrary, to serve in or be reappointed to such position until May 5th, 2026, the date of his retirement, the date of his retirement or on the date which he is relieved of duties by the Berlin Select Board, whichever occurs first, provided, however, that he is mentally and physically capable of performing the duties of such position. The Select Board may, at the expense of Paul Kenneth Clark, require him to be examined by an impartial physician designated by the Select Board to determine such capability. No further deduction shall be made from the regular compensation of Paul Kenneth Clark under Chapter 32 of the General Laws for any service performed subsequent to reaching age 65 and upon retirement. Paul Kenneth Clark shall receive a superannuation, retirement allowance, equal to that which he would have been entitled to had he retired upon age 65, provided, however, that the General Court may make clerical or editorial changes of form only to the bill unless the Select Board approves amendments to the bill prior to enactment by the General Court and authorize the Select Board to approve such amendments which shall be within the scope of the general public objectives of the petition."
That motion is as, as written on your motion sheet. Would someone like to speak to this?
Do I speak?
Mr. Hawkins of the Select Board?
Testing point.
Oh, excuse me. Hey.
Hello, I'm looking under the, under the TV. Sorry about that. Yeah, let me stand up. So basically, what we've done is that we've petitioned the legislature, and Meg Kilcoyne, Representative Kilcoyne, and Senator Cronin have been in touch with Margaret just about on a daily basis. If not, Margaret's on a daily basis contact with them, trying to push forth the legislation. Our last update was that the representatives have gone through it and approved it, and it's on its way to the Senate. So with any hope, we can get an approval from the legislature of this upcoming week.
If I may, just-
Town Administrator, Margaret Narwitz.
Thank you. If I may just add that, yes, this was filed under Home Rule by the Governor. If for any reason there is a holdup with the pending legislation already at the legislature, this would provide the Board the ability to be able to file separately for this.
In other words, it simply gives additional support to an action they've already taken.
Yep.
Is there any comment from anybody else about this? If not, I will ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
Barry, can you-
Motion carries by unanimous vote.
Roger, sorry.
Article 3, Tax Collection Software Conversion. Dennis Furibay, Treasurer.
My apologies to the Boards that have heard this multiple times. "I move that the town transfer from Free Cash $32,000 for the purpose of purchasing conversion expenses for a new state-of-the-art tax and financial software package, including acquisition, installation, and equipping and other expenses incidental or related thereto."
Motion is made and seconded in the same form. You have it on your motion sheet. Dennis, you want to speak to it?
Yeah, we're running a package right now that was written in the early 80s, and we've had it since the late 80s. And the company has indirectly stopped promoting that particular software package that they have. It doesn't do what we need to do because of the CPA. Most software companies, when a state law changes, they do a free change that everyone gets because it's part of how the law works. And in this company, when something happens like that, you get charged individually. And I received a bill for $4,100 just so we could handle the CPA. And we were told that that's because there aren't too many towns left that bill twice a year. So that kind of started things. The software is so old now that when we've upgraded the equipment and software in the Town Hall, the screen has shrunk from the normal 20 by, what, 12 and 1/2, to a 7-inch by 5 and 1/2 inch, or roughly 15% of the screen. Causes immense eye fatigue. It makes eights look like sixes, and sixes looks like eights. And there is a trick to make it 4% or 5% a little bit bigger, but the way the software is written, the bigger page remains at the bottom when you put a shorter page up, so it gets very confusing, and we just can't make it a little bit larger. It, also, is software that requires a cap key. It doesn't work if you don't have everything in caps, and I don't think there's too many folks here that have to do that with their software. And it's an arrow-based system, up to get out of the batch, and down to get back where you were, so it, it just doesn't exist anymore out on the market. And the major problem is, they have embedded, they're back like in the days of digital and a few other software companies and computer companies, where they thought their proprietary codes and stuff shouldn't be released to everybody. And this is one of those companies from back then that feels that's the case. So it creates all sorts of problems, trying to calculate the interest for the CPA. I have to do it manually, one at a time by every person that's late. That's why we don't like late pays. And it's prone to errors because it's just an Excel spreadsheet that we have to put together every time we do a batch. So the list goes on and on. I tried to cut it for one page, just to give you an idea, and this will help immensely. It will, the cost will end up being the same over a six-year period, and it actually comes in a little bit better because now we don't have to buy custom proprietary forms to print on them. We can print on regular paper. And it's gonna be one-sided, it's gonna be great. And it sounds unimportant, but it will cut down on the number of people that don't take care of their excise tax at the registry properly, and it, that alone creates a lot of problems that we have to deal with. I think that's it. The cost will include nine users now, instead of one, and everyone from the assessors, straight through to the Town Accountant, and including the Town Administrator will have privileges on the system. Right now, there's only one person that's on at a time, so when folks call in to see what their balances are, you have to get out of the batch, take care of it, and then get back in where you were. That won't happen anymore. So the use of the cloud is something that's important to all of us, and by buying nine of them, we made it affordable for those that wanted it, those that have part of this software package, very affordable. So, we're all gonna be on the cloud now, and that'll include the accountant and the assessors. And, not to bore you, but this is the tail end of it. It's broken up, so the data coming from the assessors is sent over on a disk, and then we had to borrow a disk reader, our disk reader from way back, from the computer geeks. They found one for us. We convert it, put it into our system, and then to get it into the tax title, which is the treasurer's side of life, it's all done manually on an Excel spreadsheet. So it's really advanced. So hopefully you'll support this, and it passes.
We have a printed recommendation from the Finance Committee, and also from the Capital Planning Committee. Is there any further comment?
My only comment was that this, the funds for this come from Free Cash.
We can't get him.
Can't get him.
Well, he's like behind the screen.
Does anyone else want to speak on the motion? I don't know, the first guy, 30 per plane? Will this new software come from the same software company? Good. I was gonna ask, Dennis, how many other, do you know about how many other towns or some other towns that are using the new way?
There's quite a few in Massachusetts. The company is based in Acton, Mass. And this will handle small to medium size. Most of the larger towns use a more expensive, very more expensive system that we can't afford right now. It has so many modules, it's amazing, but it's also difficult to use. You have to have a bigger stack. And many local towns, I don't have the list with me, use the new software. It's a company called Badar, and we've been using the accounting part of that package for many years now. The Town Accountant has had it. And this will fully integrate, integrate everything from the same vendor, so there's a lot of value to that. It's all predetermined, including printing forms that the old system, we have to do by type writing.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? If not, I'll ask you to vote. The motion is as printed under Article 3 on your motion sheet. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Article 4, Community Preservation Act, 2021 Annual Budget. I might state right now upfront that we have an article here for 2021, that's the fiscal year we're now in, and then later in the meeting, Article 17 is the one for the fiscal year that starts in July. Tim Wheeler, Chair of the CPA Committee.
"I move that the town transfer reserve from the Community Preservation Fund annual revenues in the amounts recommended by the Community Preservation Act Committee for community preservation projects and other expenses in fiscal year 2021, as printed in the warrant for this meeting."
We have motion made and seconded. You want to speak to it now, Tim?
Yes, Tim Wheeler, 232 Pleasant Street. On behalf of the committee, what happens is that since the committee wasn't formed until October of last year, action on the 2021 fiscal year was not possible. There was no recommendation that could be made. So what you're doing is, you're acting on last fiscal year that we're in now, to transfer money which is mandated by the state, 10% of all the Community Preservation Act money has to be moved into three categories, historic preservation, housing, and recreation, and open space. And so, that's what you're accomplishing through this action.
In your warrant, it is printed in the town report, you, under Article 4, you'll see the amounts of money and, and the things that they go for that are represented in this, under this motion. That's on page 99 of the town report. Finance Committee has a printed recommendation. Do you have anything further to say? Okay. If not, is there anyone else that wants to speak on motion under Article 4? You may have to wave your hand around a lot for me to see them, because they're so far away.
Kim Bratton, 75 Boilston Road. Just my question is, I see-
Turn the mic down closer to you. There you go.
Okay. I just have a question. You have this money specified by the different buckets. Do you have specific plans to use that specific amount of money?
Tim?
So the Community Preservation Act Committee has the responsibility of generating a community preservation plan, which we're in the process of doing now. Most likely, we'll come to the town with a public hearing in July. We'll, we'll probably begin to finalize the plan. We've been working with the different constituent groups that represent a lot of the ways in which this money can be utilized. And we'll probably begin to finalize the plan later in June, have a public hearing in early July. And in that plan, we outline the mechanisms that are utilized by the community to utilize these funds. So the application process to the Community Preservation Act Committee is outlined. Then the Community Preservation Act Committee makes a recommendation, and articles are placed on a warrant at a future town meeting. So no money can be expended without the Community Preservation Act Committee making a recommendation to town meeting, and a warrant article being voted on favorably at a future town meeting. The possibility, then, is there that we could potentially have some projects that are approved if we had a town meeting, let's say, in October or November. If not then, then certainly at the beginning of the town meeting in May of 2022. And again, the, the funds are designated for 10% automatically for historic preservation, 10% for housing, and 10% for open space and recreation. The additional 70%, 5% can be used for administrative costs by the committee. Let's say you have to do an appraisal of a property, or you have to bring in a consultant to assist on some particular project, you might use some of that administrative funds that way. And then the remaining 65%, in the fiscal year we're, we're talking about right now, we've taken no action on the remaining money. But in the article that we're gonna deal with later for fiscal '22, you'll see that we've moved money from the fund into a balanced fund that then can be voted on at a special town meeting or an annual town meeting. So all of those funds, the additional 65% become available for articles that could be voted on.
Still on the same article when I haven't checked.
So right now, all the money continues just to sit until we have a future town meeting where particular articles are presented and you vote in favor of those.
Is there anyone else? Hearing none, I'm gonna ask you to vote on the motion. It is as shown on Article 4 on your motion sheet. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion passes by unanimous vote. Article 5, Special Article Close-Up. You have a list of different previous articles that have been voted by town meetings in the past, and this is the leftover money at the end, either not having been spent or, or as leftover after the project is done. Is the motion under Article 5? Scott Hawkins of the Select Board?
"I move to close out the remaining balances in the special article accounts to be sourced and identified, from which each article is previously funded as set forth in the table below. The unspent funds from raise and appropriate and free cash be closed out to the general
And the, it includes the list under it, which is also on the motion sheet, and we're voting on that list as it is on the motion sheet. Finance Committee has a positive recommendation. Is there anything further to be said? Does anyone else want to speak to the motion? Hearing none, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Article 6, Bullet House Renovations Expanded Article Scope. Chris Keef with the Select Board. Chris Keefe with the Select Board.
I move that the town expand the scope of Article Sixteen of the May second, two thousand sixteen annual town meeting for the purpose of renovation work for the Bullard House to include design, surveys, and engineering.
Motion is made and seconded. Do you want to speak to it? Chris?
I think it's self-explanatory. These items were not included in the original article. Unless another historical commission member wants to speak to it.
It essentially says that the renovation work, at times, if you're gonna do renovation work, you need to do design surveys and engineering to make sure you're doing the right thing. So that it just allows the use of the funds for that also. Is there a comment from Finance Committee under Article Six? No comment. Anyone else want to speak to the motion? If not, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Article Seven. The fiscal year 2021 capital budget. Oh, okay.
Hi, Anna Crane, Chair, Capital Planning. Article Seven, I move that the town transfer the sum of seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars from free cash and the sum of ninety-nine thousand, one hundred and thirty-nine dollars from Highland Commons Public Safety Mitigation Funds for the sum total of eight hundred and nineteen thousand, one hundred and thirty-nine to fund the fiscal year 2021 capital budget as printed in Article Seven of the warrant for this meeting. And that unexpended or unencumbered funds for item numbers one, two, six, and seven be closed out to the general fund. For items number three and four, returned to the Highland Commons Public Safety Mitigation Fund.
Motion is made and seconded. Do you want to speak to it, Anna?
As usual, we had a group of requests from town offices for capital purchases and items. So we narrowed it down to the rooftop air handler unit on the public, not public safety, on the town offices portion of the public safety building. The roof and the rooftop air handler unit both need to be replaced. One of our air handler units has completely stopped working, so it needs to be replaced. But in the replacement of it, we also have a leaking roof that needs to be replaced before we can replace it. Air handling unit. So those are our first two items on the list. Replacing our police cruiser, item number three, we do that every year as part of a revolving plan to keep our police cruisers up to date. Fire and EMS, we're replacing a non-operational pickup with a pickup that works, so that we could use it. And hot top, item number five, this also is something that occurs every year so that we can add to funding that we already have in order to keep our roads up to date. Item number six, a loader replacement. We have a twenty-one-year-old front-end loader that mostly works. And so we'd like to replace it with a brand-new loader that always works. We also would like to get a wood chipper. Our wood chipper is twenty-five years old. And as you guys know, we have plenty of old trees around here that will need to get shipped up. So we would like to purchase a wood chipper. As well as finally continuing to fund our capital stabilization fund. So last year, we established and funded a savings account for capital projects so that we do not always have to go to free cash or general funds. And as our plan to take ten percent of our budget every year and put it into our stabilization fund for further use, we have done so as well. So we've put a hundred and twenty-five thousand into the capital stabilization fund.
As Anna commented on that list of expenditures, you will find them on page one hundred of your town report as part of the article that was published in the warrant. And you will note that there are funding expiration dates that are included there. And the places to which the money is returned are in the motion that she read. Finance Committee has a positive recommendation. Anything further to be said? Stan Rogulinski, the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Barry. Sorry. The other thing I would say is that finance defers to capital planning on this. And we have a representative who sits on this board, which is Janet. So we do recommend their, all the hard work that they did, and recommend that you support them.
Anyone else want to speak on the motion? Hearing nobody, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. That took care of about five or six or eight articles in our old method of doing things. Now we have Articles Eight through fourteen. We'll have a motion there. Chris Keefe?
I move to approve the motions as printed in the warrant for the meeting under Articles Eight and Ten through fourteen.
Motion is to approve the articles as printed in the warrant under Articles Eight and Ten through fourteen. All of those articles are things that we have in each annual town meeting and usually pass easily. The motions are there and clear. If anybody has a question on any of those, we'll take them now. You'll note that we're not doing Article Nine. We will do that separately in just a minute. Any comments on any of these from Finance or anyone else? If not, I'm gonna ask you to vote. I'm gonna use this as another practice for the electronic voting. There's one article here that might require more of a motion and therefore I'm gonna ask, I mean, more of a, a more accurate count. So therefore, I'm gonna ask you to vote there. We will open the voting on this now for twenty seconds.
Barry, this is the motion, Article Eight, Ten, Eleven, Twelve, Thirteen, fourteen.
Vote now. Bottom right-hand corner of the screen, if you can see it or read it, the number increases as we're voting, as the people's votes are tallied. It doesn't tell you how they voted. It just says we've had seventy-four people vote. And we can close that vote now, please. And we had eighty people vote in the results. Seventy-seven yes, three no. Okay, Article Nine. Peg Stone, Office of the Select Board.
I move that the various reports of officers and committees of the town as contained in the 2020 annual town report be accepted by the town, but without imposing any personal liability on any individuals who are officers of any board for the action taken hereby and that the text of Article Eighteen, as printed on page one oh two, be replaced with the following. Article Eighteen, to raise and appropriate or borrow or transfer from available funds or otherwise provide all necessary sums of money to defray the town's expenses for the fiscal year beginning July first, 2021, and to determine the salaries of the town officers for that period or take any action relative thereto.
What happened here is that we had a misprint in the town report. If you look at Article Eighteen in the town report, you'll find that it is the same article. It shows up as Article Nineteen in the town report. We didn't want to do that twice. And we, Article Eighteen is the one to appropriate the, all the money for the budget of the town. We didn't want to leave that one out. The posted warrant was correct and had Article Eighteen as we have it in this motion. This is simply to correct the printing in the town report as we accept the town report, written reports to the town. Is there anything to be said about this motion? Hearing nothing, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Are there any outstanding town reports? Are there any town reports that a committee or officer of the town wants to make now because they didn't manage to, it wasn't in the town report? Hearing none, we will pass along to the next article. Article Sixteen, Cable Access Committee PEG Funding. Pat Anderson of the Cable Access Committee.
Patricia Anderson, Fifty-Five Peter Road, Cable Access Committee. I move to that the town appropriate from the Public Education and Government Access Cable-Related Fund the sum of fifty-nine thousand, five hundred and twenty as a grant to be used for the fiscal year 2022 operating purposes. An additional forty thousand to fund the purchase and installation of audio and video equipment and any costs related to or incidental thereto in meeting rooms located in the town offices of Twenty-three Linden Street in accordance with the PEG access grant and Massachusetts Journal of Law, Chapter Forty-four, Section Fifty-three F, Three Quarters. Set funds to be expended by the Cable Access Committee.
Do you want to speak to it?
These are funds that we already have in the, that are being managed by the town, so they're not tax money. Our budget just went up a bit because we are doing so much for, because of the pandemic. So we have to actually, we've been trying to get all the meetings on our YouTube channel so everyone in the town can see them. This is not taxpayer money. It's actually cable subscriber money.
We have a written recommendation of the Finance Committee in favor. Is there any further comment? Are there others that wish to speak to this? Would you say just another word about the work that was gonna be done in the town office meeting rooms and what that's about?
We wanted to have just more availability for town meetings. So we're just putting some automated cameras that can be turned on during the open meetings and just so they're more available. And we record them and put them on the YouTube channel for all the town people to see.
This will enable the recording of meetings of various boards and so forth to be recorded and sometimes without somebody having to do it and do it.
Yes, somebody, it's recorded and then it's edited. Or we are also working towards streaming live.
We are streaming live right now.
We are streaming live right now.
Anyone else to speak on it? If not, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Thank you. Article Seventeen, Community Preservation Act Fiscal Year 2022. Tim Wheeler.
I move that the town appropriate and transfer a reserve from the Community Preservation Fund, annual revenues in the amounts recommended by the Community Preservation Act Committee for committing administrative expenses, community preservation projects, and other expenses in fiscal year 2022, with each item to be considered a separate appropriation as printed in the warrant for this meeting.
Motion is made to second it. This is the same kind of action that we already took for the previous fiscal year. Tim, do you want to speak to it further?
Just to reiterate, the, these are based on estimated figures. We appreciate the work that June has done with the committee in trying to fathom the ways in which we ought to anticipate revenues. Some of these revenues come from a state match. In this case, Berlin last year received almost two hundred thousand dollars from the state as a result of being at a three percent rate for this fee. And so, in essence, last year, we generated close to half a million dollars, which means that those funds, as I said before, become available for warrant articles potentially even in the fall of this coming year. And it means that there are a number of projects that could be dealt with that a lot of people are looking forward to, working on for a number of years. And again, the numbers are specified in your.
The Finance Committee has a written recommendation in favor. Is there anything that they wish to say further? Is there anyone else that wants to speak to this motion? Again, the report specifics in the article itself, Article Seventeen in your warrant, is printed on page one oh two of the town report. If I hear nothing more, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Article Fifteen. Excuse me, that's wrong.
Eighteen.
Article Eighteen. This is the article under which we do the budget. The motions under this article will be given by the Finance Committee. They've worked long and hard with other town officials getting the budgets and things ready. And I want you to pay attention to them as we start this process. Stan Rogulinski of the Finance Committee.
All right. If anyone's fallen asleep, wake up. This is the exciting part. All right. General Government, Motion One. I move to raise and appropriate the sum of one million, three hundred and sixty-nine thousand, one hundred and fifty-five dollars to fund items one through forty-seven and to transfer from free cash the sum of fifty thousand dollars to item eleven, as recommended by the Finance Committee for FY 2022. I don't, actually. But we'll get you one.
Oh, it's all right. We'll work it out here. It's the same one that's on the motion sheet.
That is correct.
You were given a yellow sheet when you entered. Most of this is exactly the same as it is in the town report. There may have been one or two little departures. But if you use the yellow sheet, you should match all the motions that are coming up and the sections that we're working on. Right now, this is the first page, which is General Government. And it has all the amounts listed for the, under this motion. It actually goes over onto the top of the next sheet. Thank you. Anyone have a question or wish to explain anything on this? Do you want to speak to it, Stan?
Well, it's, as printed in the annual report, the town budget was worked on with the understanding that we are still in the pandemic environment. We are still operating not in a spending freeze, but in a as-necessary basis. We are still operating not in a spending freeze, but in a as necessary basis. Uh, so with that understanding, the vast majority of line items in the budget have certainly an attempt to make to be held constant, um, salaries in particular, but all committees were asked to critically look at their budget and to not, to make an attempt to not ask for things this year, um, if things can wait until a clearer picture becomes available with, with finances, with the pandemic hopefully breaking. So, there's still a lot of uncertainty with tax revenues, with, um, commercial revenues, with, um, with new growth, with hotel taxes, with all of the, basically all of the revenue sources for the town are in flux. And, um, this is our best attempt to put forth a budget that is held constant, as held as constant as we could, um, to avoid raising taxes as much as we could. We have, this is the first piece of it.
Anything else to be said on this motion? Hearing nothing, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor, um, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously.
Yeah. Scott Schultz. I move to raise and appropriate the sum of two million, one hundred and fifty-three thousand, seven hundred and seventy-two dollars to fund items forty-eight through sixty-nine. Appropriate from the Highland Commons Public Safety Mitigation Receipts reserved for appropriation account, the sum of two hundred and ten thousand dollars to item forty-nine, police wages full-time, one hundred and forty-five thousand, four hundred and ten dollars, and item fifty-three, fire and EMS wages, full-time, sixty-four thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars. To appropriate from rescue squad receipts reserved for appropriation, the sum of one hundred thousand dollars to item fifty-three, fire and EMS wages, full-time, and to appropriate from the inspectors' offset receipts account, the sum of one hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars to item sixty, plumbing and gas inspector wages, part-time, sixty-five thousand. Item sixty-two, electrical inspector wages, part-time, one hundred thousand, as shown on the handout for the meeting titled Fiscal Year Twenty-two, Finance Committee Recommended
Thank you. Motion is made and seconded. It is in the form that is in the, on the motion sheet that you had given to you as you arrived today. And the items that it covers are on the second page of your yellow sheet under Public Safety, the column Recommended. Anything to be said further on this motion?
The one, uh, unknown on this one is both police and fire, uh, contracts are up at the end of fiscal year twenty-one, so we don't have a number specifically for fiscal year twenty-two at present. You will see the salary numbers are level funded, and, uh, we've reserved some funds, which you just previously voted for, on line item eleven, the contingency line item. That was a temporary line item, that additional funds were kept there to handle any police or fire contract, uh, increases.
Christine Flynn. Turn the mic down so you...
Chris Flynn, South Street. Um, I just have a question on, uh, under the public safety on line item, uh, forty-eight, police salary. Is that the chief of police salary?
That is correct.
And, um, it's a hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars.
One hundred and fifty-two thousand, FY twenty-one. The, uh, recommended for FY twenty-two is a hundred and fifty thousand, six hundred and three.
The Commissioner of Police in New York City doesn't take that.
Want to bet?
Yeah. I just looked it up before I came. A hundred and one thousand. Wow.
Anyone else want to comment?
I still doubt it.
Hearing nothing, I'll ask you to vote. The motion is for all the items under Public Safety, as in the written motion on your motion sheet, Public Safety. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries the affirmative.
Public Works. Uh, I move to raise...
Oh, sorry. Stop here, and I've got to do something else first, okay?
Aye, aye.
I'm going to step down for this motion. Um, as cemetery, as a cemetery commissioner, I've got, I'm going to try to do something under this motion, so I'll, uh, I, I have to have a temporary moderator elected, and I'll call him the town clerk to do that election.
Is there a nomination for a temporary moderator? Okay, Timothy Wheeler has been named and seconded. Are there any other nominations? Okay, uh, if, if none, I will ask you to vote. All those in favor of Timothy Wheeler for temporary moderator, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Mr. Wheeler is elected.
It didn't say no, so that's a good sign. Public Works. So, uh, this is items seventy through eighty-one, and, um, does someone from the Finance Committee wish to speak?
I would love to, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you.
I move to raise and appropriate the sum of seven hundred and five thousand, eight hundred and sixty-four dollars to fund items seventy through eighty-one. To appropriate from the transfer station sticker and recycling offset receipts account, the sum of one hundred and twenty thousand dollars to item seventy-nine, transfer station expenses, and to appropriate the sum of six thousand dollars from general cemetery receipts and the sum of twenty-two hundred dollars from sale of lots to item eighty-one, cemetery expenses, as recommended by the Finance Committee for FY twenty-two.
And we have a motion in a second. Do you care to, uh, comment?
No, but I have a feeling that the former moderator, Mr. Egger, would love to.
Mr. Egger, would you care to be recognized? Mr. Egger from the Cemetery Commissioners.
Gary Eager, fifty-one South Street. I'm on the, a member of the Cemetery Commissioners Board. I move to transfer three thousand, four hundred and twenty-eight dollars from cemetery part-time salary to cemetery expenses, making line item eighty zero and line item eighty-one, fifteen thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars.
Mr. Egger, would you care to explain?
I'll try. Um, if you look at the, the line for cemetery expenses, you'll see that there's some changes shown there from previous years. There is some transition taking place. Our groundskeeping for next year is going to be taken up under, under Highway Department, and so a substantial sum of money has been moved from our expense account to the, uh, At the same time, we have another transition, and that is that our thirty-five-year Cemetery Superintendent George Pendigas passed away last August first. And for the current year, the Commissioners have been handling his duties, uh, at no cost to the town for the, for this year as an interim measure, but for next year, we would like to pay somebody to do it. Um, this money that we're moving had been earmarked for the Cemetery Superintendent's salary, and two of the Commissioners have been handling his duties, and for the next fiscal year only, we would like to pay one of the Commissioners as an independent contractor to handle the Superintendent's duties. That would be paid out of the expense budget. We have done the required things under the Conflict of Interest statute to allow us to employ one of our members to do work as a contract worker. We have not done the things under the Conflict of Interest statute that would allow, allow us to pay the person as an employee, so therefore, we want to take it from the employee account and put it into the expense account so that we can pay it that way for this year only. And by another year, we'll have further, uh, remodeling of things, and if we're going to continue with this kind of a setup, we would put the money back into the, uh, into the expense, into the, pardon, the salary line and, and accomplish the things that need to be done to do that under the Conflict of Interest law. So, that's the explanation for what we're trying to do. The total amount of money for cemeteries is the same as it is in the proposed budget.
So, Mr. Egger's motion is an amendment, and I'd like to ask the Finance Committee to give...
Given that the bottom line number has not changed, the Finance Committee has supported them.
Very good. Any comments or questions about the motion to amend? All right. So, we're voting on a motion to amend. The motion is to move to transfer three thousand, four hundred and twenty-eight dollars from cemetery part-time salary to cemetery expenses, making line item eighty zero and line item eighty-one, fifteen thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
It's, uh, not unanimous, but it does pass. And now we have the Public Works motion with, as amended. So, the motion is to move to raise and appropriate the sum of seven hundred and five, eight hundred and sixty-four dollars to fund items seventy through eighty-one, to appropriate from the transfer station sticker and recycling offset receipts account, the sum of one hundred and twenty thousand to item seventy-nine, transportation expenses, and to appropriate the sum of, well, we've just gone by, yeah, correct. But the same bottom line, so, um, all those in favor of approving the Public Works portion, portion of the, uh, budget, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Thank you, sir. Human Services.
I move to raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred and fourteen thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars to fund items eighty-two through ninety-three in the Finance Committee's recommended fiscal year twenty-two budget.
You want to speak to that one, sir?
Yeah, really don't have anything else to, uh, add on, uh, on this Q B one.
Anyone else want to speak on this motion? This is the Human Services part of the budget in your yellow sheet. I don't think I see any hands. All those in favor say aye. Oppose, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Culture and Recreation.
I move to raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred and seventy-six thousand, five hundred and sixteen dollars to fund items ninety-four through one hundred in the Finance Committee's recommended FY twenty-two budget.
Anything to be said on this motion? The Culture and Recreation section of the budget. Hearing nothing, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Debt and Interest. Scott.
I move to raise and appropriate the sum of three hundred and eight thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars to fund items one zero one and one zero two, and to appropriate from septic loan receipts available for appropriation, the sum of four thousand and three hundred and eight dollars to item one oh two principal, as recommended by the Finance Committee for fiscal year twenty-two.
Motion is made and seconded. It's as on your, uh, sheet. Is there any further comment?
You will notice that there was a significant reduction primarily because of the payoff of the fire truck, uh, loan, uh, over the last fiscal year.
Anyone else want to say anything? Hearing no one, I will ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion unanimously approved. We're now down to intergovernmental expenditures. These are some of our biggest numbers because all of the schools are in there, uh, along with some other smaller items. First one, Stan.
Yeah, I will, I'll just do all the intergovernmental ones instead of handing these off. So, for the Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission, I move to raise and appropriate the sum of eight hundred and sixty-three dollars to fund item one oh three in the Finance Committee's recommended budget.
Anyone want to comment on this one? If not, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote.
For the Assavet Regional Housing Consortium, I move to appropriate the Affordable Housing account, from, from the Affordable Housing Account, the sum of twelve thousand dollars to fund item one oh four in the Finance Committee's recommended FY twenty-two budget.
Motion is made and seconded. Are there any comments on this motion? Hearing none, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously.
For Assavet Valley Regional Technical High School, I move to raise and appropriate the sum of five hundred and forty-nine thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars to fund items one oh five and one oh six in the Finance Committee's recommended FY twenty-two budget. That's both for our assessment and for their capital assessment.
Motion is made and seconded. Anything bottom want to speak on that?
Uh, the only thing I would say on that is just the, uh, the increase in the assessment is due to, I believe it's one additional student. That's correct.
Anyone else? If not, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion is unanimously carried.
B M S, Ramon Memorial School. I move to raise and appropriate the sum of three million, four hundred and forty-three thousand, six hundred and thirteen dollars to fund item one oh seven and to transfer from free cash, the sum of sixty-eight thousand to item one oh eight, Berlin Memorial Capital Assessment, as recommended by the Finance Committee for FY twenty-two. So, again, this is both the assessment and the capital assessment, operating and capital.
Anyone want to comment on this? Or a question? I don't see anything, so I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote.
Tejantow, I move to raise and appropriate the sum of three million two hundred and ninety-six thousand nine hundred and fifty-eight to fund items one oh nine and one ten as recommended by the finance committee for FY twenty-two. Again, both assessment and capital, operating and capital.
Anything to be said on this motion?
Uh, the one thing I would like to point out, uh, to, to the general public on this is that I, you might notice that this is a fairly significant increase of six percent, but I would also ask you to understand that most of this is driven by special education costs and special education tran, um, transportation, which are completely out of the school's control. So if any student requires special education programming, is required to provide it for those students and it's just something we have to live with. So the vast majority of this increase is due to that.
Any other comment?
And then actually the one other thing, Barry, that I would point out is under the capital section of this, um, Tejantow has renegotiated their bond for the most, for the building of the building and that has resulted in a significant cost savings to the town, to both members, both towns, Los Angeles and, uh, moving forward and, uh, has actually significantly helped offset the cost for the coming years.
Anyone else? If none, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. One more section of the budget. Mr., Mr. Schultz.
Miscellaneous benefits and insurance. I move to raise and appropriate the sum of one million four hundred and ninety thousand two hundred and ninety dollars to fund items one eleven through one eighteen in the finance committee's recommended FY twenty twenty-two budget.
Is there anything you want to speak further to it or?
Nothing at this time.
Okay. Does anyone else want to speak to it? If not, I will ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Before I do Article nineteen, I knew there was something I was going to forget at the beginning of the meeting and that is, that is that I forgot to announce that we can use the restrooms, the toilet facilities in the school. And if you wanted, you go through the gate here and follow down and into the building and you can, uh, the restrooms outside the gym are available to us as they normally would be for town meeting. Last year we had porta potties. We decided we could save a little money on this one by, uh, and the school felt they were a lot safer letting the general public in than they were, uh, a year ago. Okay, Article nineteen, welcome to Berlin Roadside. Mr. Timothy Wheeler of the Planning Board.
Um, Tim Wheeler, um, on behalf of the Economic Development Committee, the Planning Board appoints the Economic Development Committee, so they had asked if we would make this motion on their behalf. I move that the town transfer from free cash the sum of two thousand dollars to fund a portion of the purchase and installation of three Welcome to Berlin Roadside signs set funds to be expended by the planning board.
Motion is made and seconded under the article. You want to speak to it at all?
The important thing is that this is just, uh, the partial funding. I think it's a, it's a goodwill act on the part of the town to help support a lot of the local businesses that would be asked to participate as well and, um, three strict signs will, um, this is the, uh, by local forces, uh, this key during this crisis. We found that, uh, by local response from the citizens has been pretty positive and that's a way to maintain your local economy and the Economic Development Committee is keenly aware of that and wants to help promote a lot of local businesses, much as they can. Thank you.
Finance Committee has a, an, and also capital planning have, um, positive recommendations as to be said on that. I guess we're all set on that. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Uh, Article twenty, yes. Mr. Wheeler, if we would kindly come back.
While I have the opportunity, I'm looking for Tom Sanford. Is Tom, oh, there he is. Good. Okay, now I know who can recognize him. I'll, I'll be in touch with you in a minute. Article twenty, cemetery driveway paving. Do we have a motion in regard to Article twenty? Mr. Ager.
Area fifty-one South Street, a member of the cemetery commissioners. I move that the town transfer from free cash the sum of fifteen thousand dollars to pay driveways in the cemeteries, including all incidental and related expenses, and that any unexpended or unencumbered funds be closed out to the general fund effective June thirty, twenty twenty-three.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Ager, would you like to speak to this motion?
Uh, we've done two previous efforts at, uh, paving the drives in the South Cemetery. Uh, this one, we're going to use this money with a previous, uh, appropriation that's still available and with the help of the highway department, pave the rest of the sections that we want to in the South Cemetery at this time. There are some sections there of our old, uh, stone paved driveways that are still in very good shape and we expect they're going to go on for probably another decade or so. But, uh, these are, this will complete what we want to do in South Cemetery and if there's a little bit left over, we will be asking for more next year so that we can finally begin to pave the main drive at the North Cemetery, which is still totally a dirt drive. That gets to be a bit of a hardship if it's really, uh, blowing snow under one, things like that. So, um, that, that's kind of what we're looking at. Uh, we've been doing this as a program and, uh, by the time that we come to you next year, we'll have a clear idea of just how much the, the paving that we want to do in the North Cemetery is going to cost over.
I see that the finance committee and the capital planning committee have both voted in favor of this. Does the finance committee have anything further to add? Are there any questions in regard to this article? Very good. The finance committee has asked me to interrupt the proceedings and say that if you want water, please raise your hand. It's, it's on behalf of the finance committee, I guess. This is one. Oh, the nurse, the nurse in Janet is just one. All right, we'll vote on Article twenty, cemetery driveway paving. The motion is to, um, transfer from free cash the sum of fifteen thousand to pave driveways in the cemeteries, including all incidental and related expenses, and that any unexpended and/or unencumbered funds be closed out to the general fund effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. And those opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler. And also another statement of mercy from the town administrator. If you need sunscreen, see her over here.
We're going to run out, so put your hand up if you want.
Article twenty-one, established tax title revolving fund. Motion under Article twenty-one. Dennis Faribault, Tom Prescher.
Two forty-seven. Mr. Honitor, I move that the town accept the provisions of Massachusetts General Law Chapter sixty, Section fifteen B for the purpose of establishing a tax title collection revolving fund for the treasurer, collector.
Motion is made and seconded that the town accept the provisions of Massachusetts General Law Chapter sixty, Section fifteen B for the purpose of establishing a tax title collection revolving fund for the treasurer, collector. You want to speak to it, Dennis?
Yeah, the, uh, tax title account is a very difficult one to predict. Um, this year I expected the bankrupt companies to give us a little trouble with collections and fortunately all have paid. Not sure that will continue in the future, but, um, that's what we were focusing on primarily. We also thought there'd be a lot of folks that couldn't pay their taxes, uh, because of COVID, but what has really happened is, is a bunch of folks that tend to be elderly and they haven't applied for what we call deferred taxes or other relief. And we've had a long list of people, uh, longer than should usually happen, uh, just because they don't have enough finances most of the time. Uh, and as a result, the budget for the tax title was way short to start the proceedings that we have to do legally, uh, once it's in tax title status. So by setting up this revolving fund, um, when we recover money from the folks that go past due, and it can be considerable, uh, just close two cases that both are in the eighty-six thousand dollar range, um, because of interest and penalties and lawyer fees, et cetera. This fund will allow us to keep anything that was an expense. It's a really important expense. None of the interests we earn either with this account or in the treasurer or in the collector's accounts as they move to that status, uh, will go to this fund. So, and the taxes themselves go where the accountant puts them, uh, and the fund slowly builds up so that eventually the line item becomes less and less important and then disappears and the fund get, gets larger and it will be big enough to handle the surprise amounts that were needed from time to time. Many towns have already done this. We're kind of late, uh, in the schedule, but it's something that we, uh, feel is important.
We have a positive recommendation from the finance committee and also from the Select Board. Uh, Massachusetts General Law, Section sixty, Chapter fifteen B requires that this, uh, recommendation of the Select Board be part of the, of the, uh, actions to do with this, this action. Is there a comment by anybody in regard to Article twenty-one? Hearing none, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Article twenty-two, Energy Committee Special Purpose Stabilization Fund.
I move that the town transfer from free cash the sum of ten thousand four hundred and seven dollars in amount equivalent to the receipts generated by the town's municipal energy aggregation program adders in fiscal year twenty twenty to the Energy Committee Special Purpose Stabilization Fund established under Article thirty-one of the May sixth, twenty nineteen annual town meeting and accept the fourth paragraphs, paragraph of Massachusetts General Law's Chapter forty, Section five B, which allows the dedication without further appropriation of all future municipal energy aggregation adder receipts to the Energy Committee Special Purpose Stabilization Fund established under General Law, Chapter forty, Section five B to be effective for the first fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty for the purpose of paying for future projects designed to improve the town's energy and energy efficiency or water conservation in accordance with the goals established by the Massachusetts Green Community Program.
Motion is made and seconded. It is in the form that you have on your motion sheet. Does anybody want to speak to it?
Eloise, do you have anything since you're on the committee? Are there any questions? Eloise is on our Energy Committee. I don't know if our other two members of the committee are here or not today.
Any que, any questions that someone has on this? We have recommendations from both, uh, capital planning and finance committee in favor. Any other comment? Hearing none, I will ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Article twenty-three, movable radar speed limit sign. Uh, Selectman Scott.
I move that the town transfer from the Highland Commons Public Safety Mitigation Fund the sum of twelve thousand dollars to purchase movable radar speeds limit signs, including acquisition, installation and equipping and other expenses incidental or related hereto, and to be placed on various public ways in the town from time to time by the Berlin Police Department.
Motion is made and seconded in the form that's on your motion sheet. You want to speak to it, Scott? We'll have the police chief comment on it and explain anything that, uh, may be needed.
So this article is something that was, uh, was supposed to be on last year's warrant, but we removed it to expedite the meeting last year. Um, these signs are similar to what you see in our neighboring communities. Um, they're posted on one seventeen. Um, they tell you what your speed is, give you some, um, some reinforcement. Um, if you're doing the correct thing, someone will say thank you, they have a smiley face. Um, so what we're looking to do is to purchase three to four of these signs, um, that will do, give us that positive reinforcement on at least one of the signs, uh, we would look forward to have a data collection component. And what that does is that tracks the speed of all the vehicles that go by it. It will give us the class of the vehicles, whether it's a truck, a car, um, and also it'll do some reporting for us. So one of the requests that I get is often on speed limits. Um, to, to set speed limits or to request to set, set, state to set speed limits, um, we have to determine the eighty percentile of speed of traffic on the road. So this would automatically do that for us and it would also give us some portion of reporting. It would tell us the times of the day where there's more traffic that tends to be above the, uh, the speed limit.
We have a positive comment from finance committee and also from, um, capital planning. Does anything else further to be said on this motion? Anyone else? If not, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Advanced Life Support. Next, Tom.
I move that the town transfer from Highland Commons Public Safety Mitigation Funds seventeen thousand five hundred dollars to conduct an independent analysis to determine the feasibility of establishing an advanced life support ALS level service in the town of Berlin and to study local and regional service options as well as the short and long-term costs associated with ALS service enhancements.
Motion is made and seconded. Okay, do you want to speak to it or? Does somebody else want to speak? Does anybody want to speak? want to speak?
He's way out there.
So currently, what this motion will do is look at the opportunity for Berlin to see if we can enact ALS services instead of relying on other towns to come help us when we need it. Oh, there he is. He pokes up like, you know, like the whack-a-mole. So if there are truly any more specific questions, our most awesome chief clerk is walking towards the microphone, and he can give us a little bit more skinny.
Chief Clark of Fire Department. Good afternoon. Are there any questions directly from the audience here that we can have on that? What we're trying to do, okay, so go ahead.
Michael Gaskin, Six Alden Drive. My question for Chief Clark is, in the event of an EMS call in Berlin which requires ALS intervention, where do the ALS resources come from currently, and are there deficiencies in that response in terms of response time or cost that might be identified by this feasibility study?
Chief?
Very good question. Actually, the availability of ALS has been enhanced lately by the in-service of the Bolton Fire Truck. They have an ALS truck that's, they call it, I'm sorry. It's enhanced by, very recently from Bolton Fire. They put an ALS truck in service, intercept, what they call it is, and if we have a call at the BLS level in Berlin, and at the communication center at Devens, if it meets the criteria to have paramedics respond, the nearest available one. On the south side, it's Patriot Hudson or Marlborough, and on the north side, it's Bolton coming out of their firehouse up on the north side there. So we have it now. There are some delays. If they're busy, we don't get it, and we run at BLS, which should be run at the ALS. This would give us the availability to have paramedics first out the door for the town of Berlin. We've made great strides with the putting the PRTD program into place, and this will just be an enhancement for that system. And it will be, rather than being at the basic level, EMT will be at the paramedic enhancement level. They bring a lot of skills to the street. It's just amazing to see in my career what we've come from over the years, and the medics are doing fantastic work out in the street. And it's like, and that was a very good question, and that will be answered in the sustainability and feasibility, because we want to make sure that we can continue to do it if we start it. It's easy to start it, then back up for it maybe, but we want to make sure that it's, you can afford it in the town of Berlin, sustainable and feasible, and then move forward. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Yes, Scott Hocken.
Chief Clark, the proposal today is just a study to see if it's feasible. There's actually no actual changes implemented yet. It would take another vote at town meeting to actually implement ALS services, correct?
Is there anyone else? Hearing no one, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Article twenty-five, parking enforcement. Mr. Hocken.
I move that the town accept the provisions of Chapter ninety, Section twenty A of the Massachusetts General Law as printed in the warrant for the meeting.
Warrant is, motion is made and seconded as on your motion sheet. We have a positive recommendation from Finance Committee. Anything further from Finance? I'll call on Chief Dalvin to speak to this in regard to the whole business of why this is necessary.
I will try and keep this as simple as possible. If you look in the warrant, there's a lot of language in accepting this provision in the law. But the simple part of it is, this is to allow the Berlin Police Department to enforce parking violations. So you may see some places in town, we have no parking signs, or there's restricted parking for handicapped individuals. If we have a situation right now where someone's in a handicap spot that doesn't have the proper placard, or they're in a no parking section, we can't write a ticket. So this would allow us to have the Select Board to appoint a clerk, not a member of the Police Department that would do hearings, and then the Board would also be able to create a set of parking regulations. I was asked before about the fine structure. Most of the fines would be twenty-five dollars. There are particular statutes that are particular violations that would have much larger, particularly a handicap violation. But we've been able to enforce parking at the Solomon Pond Mall, because we're part of the Assamet Public Safety District, but we actually write those tickets through the city of Marlborough. And now that we have Highland Commons, River Bridge, you know, if we get called, and there's somebody blocking a handicap spot, a part-time handicap ramp, there's nothing we can do about it.
Anyone else want to speak on the motion? Hearing no one, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Article twenty-six, parking enforcement. Mr. Hocken.
Yes, I move that the town accept provisions of Chapter forty, Section twenty-two D of the Massachusetts General Law as printed in the warrant for this meeting.
It's in the same form as on your motion sheet. Chief, do you want to speak to that?
So this is just a second part of parking enforcement. There are certain rules or certain laws, certain situations where the town may need to have a vehicle removed or towed. In order to legally do that, the town would need to accept this section. So if we had someone, again, I said they were blocking a handicap ramp, they were parking, blocking the roadway during snow removal, this would allow the town to legally tow a vehicle.
Anyone else want to speak to the motion? Hearing no one, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries in the affirmative. Article twenty-seven, zoning bylaw amendment.
Tom Sanford, four twenty-five, sorry, the road, planning board. I move that the town amend the zoning bylaw, Section five forty, home-based contracting business by adding a new five forty point ten. The business must be owned and operated by a resident of the dwelling.
The motion is made and seconded. Do you think you can speak to it, Tom?
The Berlin Planning Board held a public hearing on April thirteenth, 2021 to consider comments concerning Article twenty-seven on the annual town meeting warrant to be held on May fifteenth, 2021. At the planning board meeting held on Tuesday, April twenty-seventh, 2021, the planning board voted four in favor, zero opposed to support Article twenty-seven. Basically, what we're trying to do is, is we feel that if you're going to establish a business and incubate it in the town, that you should be a resident of the dwelling.
Is there any comment or question in regard to this amendment to the zoning bylaw? Yes.
West Durant two oh three, South Street. Is there an exemption for existing businesses that exist in town that are operated at residences to which the people physically live at this time, but the family property?
This would affect businesses going forward in the future.
Anyone else? Hearing no one, we'll proceed to a vote. Find your voting appliance, because this is a two-thirds vote to amend the zoning bylaw. Find your voting appliance, and we will call, we will open the voting for a two-thirds vote on the motion under Article twenty-seven right now. And we'll close the voting now, please. The vote is seventy-four yes, eight no, a total of eighty-four votes, eighty-two votes cast. You'll see, if you can see the screen across the top, across the top of the screen, there's a green banner to tell us that it passed by the required two-thirds vote. Article twenty-seven.
Twenty-eight.
Article twenty-eight.
Article twenty-eight. I move that the town amend zoning bylaws, Section five four one, table, home-based contracting businesses by adding, as registered by the RMV, after every instance where GBW appears.
The motion is as given on your sheet, on your motion sheet. Tom, you want to speak to it further?
The Berlin Planning Board held a public hearing on April thirteenth, 2021 to consider the comments concerning Article twenty-eight on the annual town meeting warrant to be held on May fifteenth, 2021. At the planning board meeting held on Tuesday, April twenty-seventh, 2021, the planning board voted four in favor, zero opposed to support Article twenty-eight.
We have the required vote, a required report of the planning board on record. Would you continue, Tom?
Sure. Basically, what we're trying to do is to further define the current statute by adding, as registered with the RMV, after the occurrence where the GBW is, so that there is no question, or there's no ambiguities of what the GBW stands for and how it's defined.
GBW being gross vehicle weight? Anyone else? Yes. Mr. Durant.
Did you define a minimum gross vehicle weight to be considered into commercials? You know what it is?
Anyone else? If not, find your appliance, and I will ask you to begin voting now. And we will close the voting, please. And the two-thirds, it does have the required two-thirds vote, so the motion passes. Article twenty-nine. Tim Wheeler, the planning board.
Article twenty-nine, I move that the town amend the zoning bylaw, Section five ten, in-law apartments, Section five twelve maximum size by adding, including any proposed addition or modification after total floor area.
Motion is made and seconded as on the motion sheet. Tim, the report of the planning board.
The Berlin Planning Board held a public hearing on April thirteenth, 2021 to consider comments concerning Article twenty-nine on the annual town meeting warrant to be held on May fifteenth, 2021. At a planning board meeting held on Tuesday, April twenty-seventh, 2021, the planning board voted four in favor, zero opposed to Article twenty-nine.
Do you have further explanation?
So the objective here is to allow someone to expand the residential unit, and as they expand it, perhaps include an in-law apartment, to have that total area calculated into the formula that we use to determine whether you meet the zoning requirements. Currently, you can only have a certain percentage of your structure used for an in-law apartment or an accessory apartment. Sometimes, in some of the smaller units in town, that might be crowded and confined, so this gives people an opportunity to utilize the property that they live on a little more efficiently.
Anyone else want to speak on this motion? Seeing no one, I'll ask you to vote. We are going again to do the one periodic voting, and we will start to vote now. I will call an end to the vote at this time, and we'll get the results. Seventy-seven in favor, two opposed, total of seventy-nine votes. It passes with the required two-thirds majority. Article thirty, zoning bylaw regarding common driveways. Mr. Sanford.
Article thirty. I move that the town amend the zoning bylaw, Section seven ten, common driveways, by adding a new Section seven sixteen point eight. Any change or structural addition or modification beyond general maintenance in the location, width, length, height, or material composition of a common driveway affecting its accessibility by users, or emergency vehicles, or redirecting water runoff, must be approved by the Berlin Planning Board. If at the discretion of the planning board, it's determined that a modification is substantial, a public hearing will be required.
Motion is made and seconded. Want to speak to it? Tom, you have the report of the planning board?
The Berlin Planning Board held a public hearing on April thirteenth, 2021 to consider the comments concerning Article thirty on the annual town meeting warrant to be held on May fifteenth, 2021. At the planning board meeting held on Tuesday, April twenty-seventh, 2021, the planning board voted four in favor, zero opposed to support Article thirty.
Want to speak further, Tom?
Sure. The planning board felt that any alterations to a common driveway that was substantial, the common driveway first went through a public process to get it approved, and we felt that if there was substantial changes affecting common driveways, that you should come back before our board and see if it is a material change that is significant enough that we should feel, we should open it back up to a public review and public
a public, um, a public, um, review and, um, public comments.
Does anyone else want to speak to the motion of Article thirty? Hearing no one, I'll ask you to vote again. It's a two-thirds vote, I'll call for an electronic vote, and we've started voting now. We'll close voting now. Get the results. We have seventy-five yes, seven no. The motion carries with the required two-thirds majority. Article thirty-one. Mr. Wheeler.
I move that the town amend the zoning bylaw, Section five eighty-five, which is for medical, marijuana, and adult use of marijuana establishments by adding a new Section five eighty-five point four, comma, six, no more than three retail marijuana establishments shall be permitted at any given time.
Motion is made and seconded. The Planning Board's report.
The Berlin Planning Board held a public hearing on April thirteenth, twenty twenty-one to consider comments concerning Article thirty-one on the annual town meeting warrant to be held on May fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. At the Planning Board meeting held on Tuesday, April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one, the Planning Board voted four in favor, zero opposed to Article thirty-one after amending the article by deleting the number two from the second sentence and substituting the number three.
Will you, uh, speak to that change first, Tim?
Um, so the state has a formula that they use in determining the minimum number of marijuana establishments, uh, retail that can exist in a community. The Planning Board initially had, um, used the number two, but on further, um, review, we discovered that the number of, um, package stores in the community dictated that we couldn't go below three, and so, um, the motion reads as three, and the Planning Board, because we acted initially, um, on an article that hadn't been modified yet, um, changed the number in our report, it's a three. And we think it's reasonable for a town of our size to use this, this number as a baseline. Um, if at some point in the future was determined that that number was too low, then that was, that's something we could address at a future date, but, uh, at this point, it's essentially, um, taking the minimum and using that as the, the number.
I'll be, um, I will comment that the, uh, the proposal was two, and that at the present time, there was no limit on, uh, in our present bylaw, so this is adding a limit from what it has been in the past, and therefore, the three is perfectly acceptable, uh, within the scope of the article. Does anyone else want to comment on this or ask a question?
There's a small crowd today, we could be a little less formal.
Our case, Junior Lemon, it's, uh, twenty-four Village Lane. The question is, how many do we have now? And, and do we have to have three?
Uh, Tim, would you answer it first?
So right now, we have zero. Um, we can't have fewer than three.
Understood, well.
If, if three were to apply, up to three could be approved. We couldn't deny based on our number, there may be other reasons to deny, but the threshold of three would be what we would have established as the minimum number, which is dictated by the state. If no one approves, we may never have any, although we have had some discussions with some proponents, so the town may very well see, um, some retail establishments at some time in the future.
Is there anyone else? Lynn Ryan.
The article in the book says two. Do we need an amendment?
Uh, I commented a minute ago that the two is what was proposed. The motion essentially has been made including an amendment based on the, what they found out about state law and what state law would allow. So the amendment is already included in the original vote.
Anyone else? If not, find your voting device, and we will start voting now on a two-thirds vote. I will close the voting now. And we'll see the result. Sixty-eight in favor, nine opposed. That gives us the required, um, two-thirds majority, the motion passes. Article thirty-two. Zoning bylaw change regarding residence care facility. J P, the planning board.
I move that the town amend the zoning bylaw, Section three twenty, table of principal use regulations, by deleting the current table entry for residential care facilities not more than six patients, and replacing it with the following. The zones R A, M D, C B, C, and L B become S R, and zones L I and A C R.
Thank you. The motion is in the form as shown on your motion sheet. Uh, Jay, you want to speak to it?
Yes. The Berlin Planning Board held a public hearing on April thirteenth, twenty twenty-one to consider comments concerning Article thirty-two on the annual town meeting warrant to be held on May fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. At the Planning Board meeting held on Tuesday, April twenty-seventh, twenty-one, the Planning Board voted four in favor, zero opposed to Article thirty-two. So just to, um, interpret the, uh, letters for you. Uh, we have, we have seven zones. It's out, it has to kind of what the Planning Board works with, is getting the right thing, the right uses for the right zones, and in your, uh, there's a zoning bylaw, and the last page of that has a map, and you can see where each zone is in town. So this change, it is, there's two parts of it. One is to allow small, uh, residential care facilities in a limited business district, which is currently not allowed. It will be allowed, but with, uh, special permit and site plan, plan review by the planning board. The other change is, in the R A, most of the town is residential agricultural zone, and that's going to go from a lab with special permit to a lab with special permit plus site, site plan review. And the same true is M D, multiple dwellings, which we don't have any zones in.
You have a, a planning board report? You need to file out with the town, sir. You read that already, right?
Yeah.
Anything else to be said on this motion in regard to, uh, zoning bylaw, the various different, um, it's what we allow in the various different zones under the zoning bylaw. Does anyone require additional, uh, explanation? If not, this is again a two-thirds vote required, and I will ask you to vote electronically. Find your device and begin voting now. We will close voting now and get our results. We have seventy yes and six no, and that has the required two-thirds vote, so the motion is approved. That completes the, uh, articles that we were doing, planning for today. Uh, we have additional articles we'll be doing on Monday night, Articles thirty-three through thirty-eight, and then, of course, on the twenty-fourth, we have our annual town election under Article thirty-nine. Are we, is there a motion? Christian T for the Select Board.
I move to adjourn this meeting until Monday, May seventeenth, twenty twenty-one, at six thirty P M at the Berlin Memorial School.
Motion is made and seconded to adjourn this meeting. The motion is non-debatable. When we, uh, the biggest thing I want to say before we vote on that motion is, make sure these go in the buckets before you leave. They cost us a lot of money if we have to replace them. And, uh, I would also ask that people mask up before they leave, that their masks are off at this time, so that both of the lines can, can work faster. Um, all those in favor of adjourning as, as moved, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion is unanimous. Thank you all very much for having me.